For June 23rd, or 22nd, excuse me. For the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the second time I said that in an hour.
All right. Christine, could you do a roll call, please?
Debbie Addy?
Here.
Mark Borchardt?
Here.
Christopher Dagie?
Yes, here.
Chris Tounan?
Excused, yep.
Christine Holcomb, here. Tom Cozel?
Here.
Robert Eusling?
Right here at the moment, we'll see.
Robert Jacobs?
Here.
Kathy Schweitzer?
Here, thank you. Item number four is approval slash amendments to the agenda. Any comments?
Well, shouldn't the six A, like we just discussed, go under unfinished business?
I believe it should, because it was unfinished business.
Yes.
I agree. So six A should go to unfinished business? Which would make it? Eight B?
Eight B.
Sounds good. I'm sorry. Take your motion?
Yeah, it's my motion, yes.
Second. Who supported it?
Mark.
Mark supported it. All right, any discussion? Sue, ready with motion, okay? We'll have a roll call when Christine's ready.
Debbie Addy?
Yes.
Mark Borchardt?
Yes.
Christopher Dagie?
Yes.
Christine Holcomb, yes. Tom Cozel?
Yes.
Robert Houston?
That's okay.
Bob Jacobs?
Yes.
And Kathy Schweitzer?
Yes, thank you. Item number five is approval of minutes for May 25th, 2022. Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call when Christine's ready.
Debbie Addy?
Yes.
Mark Borchardt?
Yes.
Christopher Dagie?
Yes.
Christine Holcomb, yes. Tom Cozel?
Yes.
Bob Jacobs?
Yes.
Kathy Schweitzer?
Yes, thank you. Item number six, it says labeled public hearing. I am going to definitely talk with Christine, not Christine, I'm sorry, Cindy Babish, because we really truly don't have a public hearing as far as tonight. Those are just the rules that are in a form that goes out. So we're going to have to get that taken out. And item six A has been moved per the motion. So I am going to go to item seven, which is new business. And our new business would be the Atchits, Atchits, excuse me, Burgers at 5628 Point Trumbull Road. Steve, would you like to make a presentation?
Good evening. You have a request in front of you from Mr. Russell Atchit to provide a storage building unit on his property. I believe it's to be used for storage of the cold storage or storage of food preparation materials, that kind of thing. It's for an eight by twenty storage units, could be placed in the northwest corner of the parking lot. The drawing that I provided you kind of shades that in, if you got it in color, it's in blue. The zoning ordinance allows non-residential storage units, subject to a couple of different things. The first is that it has to be at least ten feet from a main building. This storage unit would be eighty feet. Storage unit must be located, not located in the required front yard or required side yards, and this is definitely in the rear yard. And it can't be located any closer than three feet to any rear or side lot line. And this is approximately twenty feet for the rear lot property line. So it's in compliance with your ordinance. I have no objection. The only concern I have is it has taken a couple parking spaces. Also, if parking does become an issue, we may need to revisit the issue of allowing that storage container. I don't anticipate it being a problem, there appears to be plenty of parking.
Thank you. Is the applicant here in Washington make any comment? And we're welcome to come to the podium if you have anything further to add, or if not, it's okay too.
Hi, I'm Rosanna Atchit.
Hi.
I just wanted to say that it is strictly a drive-through, so we're not going to need a lot of parking.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any discussion, comments from board members?
Are you going to leave the storage container as it sets the same color? Or are you going to do any fascia on it, or anything like that?
I wanted to put-
Can you just state your name, please?
Russell Atchit.
Thank you.
I wanted to put a stripe on it, like the building is. And then I've also considered contacting the art school, the high school for the art class, to put some type of a mural for when the little kids are in the drive-through, they could kind of pick out different things on it each time they come. Give it a little bit of a reason to come back and say, well, I don't think I ever seen that. Kids in school, they get pretty creative with what they can do. And that was something that I wanted to bring up. And not just all of a sudden, one day have, you know, something on there. I wanted to paint like pines on there, have it blend in with the other pines that are around, and then put some little nature things in that the little kids would enjoy. For it doesn't, for the neighbors, when they leave, they also see something that really blends real well. But right now, I was just going to put a stripe on it to match the building, and then talk with the high school moving forward, if that would be allowed.
I don't see any objection with that, as long as it, at the end of the day, it doesn't look like graffiti.
No, I wanted to, you know, I really enjoyed looking at this, because that's where my mind was with it right away, was getting the art school, you know, the classes involved with something really special on there for the community.
It's pretty apparent the township likes art, so.
Yeah, and I, I think it would be a good task for the students.
Thank you, makes sense, thank you.
Is it going to be one of like those, one of them pods or something like that? What do you have?
Yes, it is a pod. Well, it's actually a steel container.
Right.
And it's got a good old floor in it. And it's very secure for any kind of rodents. And I had my fair share with cleaning up rodents over there. But they, I really took complete care of it. I mean, there's none around there, and I believe it's because of the container. You know, there's just, they can't get in that. And it is needed for us-
Refrigerated? Will it be a refrigerated unit?
No, no.
No power?
So no power, no nothing, no site plan modifications, no driveway curbing modifications?
No.
Doesn't interfere with any drainage, any catch basins in that location?
No, no. And I would never, I don't want to put anything in there like, you know, any kind of food that would be refrigerated or froze, I'll say that right up front. You'd never catch me doing something like that. It's just going to be for, if I get a good patio set for the front, and it comes winter, I can put it away in a good sealed area that it isn't going to get destroyed and, you know, taken off the premises or whatever. Strictly used for the business.
Are you okay if, if, big if, you need additional parking spaces to be able to move it out in the future? That was one of the concerns our planner mentioned, you're taking up three parking spaces. Don't see that for a problem, but if for some reason it does, are you willing?
I would never fight the growth of that business. I would never fight it. I, I, I want that business to be there for a long, long time. I'm done making businesses. This is my fifth restaurant, and I don't want to do another one. So, no, I, whatever, whatever would be appropriate, I'm for, you know, the right decision to be made. I'm not here to fight my own money. I'm not, it's just, I'm not, that's not what I'm all about. I want to bring a positive thing to the city.
Thank you.
What's your expected date of opening? I'm hungry for a burger.
We actually are quite excited, because our dough manufacturer that we work with is actually sending us samples Friday. And our meat guy, he's all set. We've already, we've got that down. But there's been a few disappointments, but nothing that can't stop us from opening up, you know, fairly quick. We don't want to open up over the fourth and not be prepared for it. I wouldn't even do that if I was ready. I just, I'm too seasoned on this kind of a business to do that to myself or my wife, or the employees, I would never, you know. I want them to really, really get comfortable, then. When we open, I will tell you this, you won't even know it, I'll just turn a light on. And I'll tell the kids, okay, now we're open. That's how I'll do it, that's how I did my other two burger places. I just told them one day, hey, now we really are open. Because they, you know, they want to open quick, and they want to do everything quick, but.
We'll just have to drive by and see.
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll definitely let you know.
Thanks.
But soon, hopefully. We got some more stuff to do for the building inspector, with an address and some other stuff that's got to be done. But the health department's just about ready to come in. I got a few more things. I don't like to surprise them either, and change when they come back for their first inspection and have them look at me, say, well, wait a minute. You didn't do, this wasn't here before. So they're seeing everything that I'm doing, because I got to know what I can and can't do. To, you know, it's going to take some good chess moves to make that place work. It's, but we can, we can make it work. I'm, I'm, I'm two years into positive thinking that I can pull this off.
You said this is drive-through only, right? Can you, can you walk up in order too, or no?
We want to grow into that. My wife wants it drive-through only.
Needed parking spots for that, if they're going to be walking up.
Right.
And then employee parking too.
Well, they said there's nineteen on-site parking spots, and this storage will be only utilizing-
Three.
Three, I'm sorry, you went from there to there. Okay.
Sixteen should be enough.
Sixteen should be enough. And obviously, you still have to, with us-
We had a thirty-two seat restaurant in Shores, and we only had fifteen parking spots. And the way that we changed the burgers quick, you know, our meals are quick. And they, you know, people are pretty polite to each other when they want a burger. You know, they really are. I mean, the public pretty much took care of that problem at my Shores store, it was really tight. And, you know, they kind of embarrassed each other, like, hey, come on, you're done, let us have.
Keep going.
I feel it'll work good.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Well, thank you very much, appreciate it. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve site plan for Atchit's Burgers Storage Unit, subject to compliance with all applicable building and engineering requirements.
I'm sorry, you got to comply with this?
Support.
Compliance with all applicable?
Applicable building and engineering requirements.
Do we need to put in, changing it up, the department becomes an issue?
You want to put that in there too?
I don't think there's a need to.
It seems like it's, it's only taken up three. Okay, if we don't put that in?
Yeah.
Well, I think the applicable building engineering requirements would cover it, because he'd have to come back.
Do you want to add the address to it, so we know what we're talking about? It's 5628 Point Trumbull?
Yep.
Got it? Just a minute.
Fifty-six?
Fifty-six, twenty-eight, Point Trumbull. It's okay. Okay, so our motion is?
Motion to approve site plan review?
Yeah.
By Cozel, supported by Borchardt, to comply with all applicable building and engineering requirements for Atchit's Burgers, Atchit's Burgers Storage at 5628 Point Trumbull Road.
You agree?
Yep, I agree.
Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Deborah Addy?
Yes.
Mark Borchardt?
Yes.
Christopher Dagie?
Yes.
Christine Holcomb, yes. Tom Cozel?
Yes.
Robert Jacobs?
Yes.
And Kathy Schweitzer?
Yes, thank you. Well, you should be all set then, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you. Good job.
We don't have to stamp anything for these, do we? Steve, do we have to do a site plan stamp for the building department, or are we all signed?
Do you have like special names for your burgers?
Oh, okay. We're all set then?
Maybe.
You're going to come up with names? All right, I'm going to move on to item number eight, which is unfinished business. The first unfinished business is eight A, which is amendments, Steve?
Got to tell you, their place used to be owned by my house, Romeo Plankenhall Road.
Yep.
Used to frequent that place, best hamburgers around.
Okay, there you go.
Especially the buns.
Thanks.
Yeah, they were great, we were sorry to see them leave.
Glad to have them here, how's that?
The, you're seeing this, I think, for the third or fourth time. There's no, no changes other than, from the last time, other than we did find the corrected current ordinance that talked about the seven consecutive days of the parking. So I do not know where the other one came from, we haven't been able to figure that out. But you, most of the changes, I mean, the changes are all the same. We're dealing with accessory buildings, and boathouses are not considered an accessory building. You get an additional boathouse if you meet the requirements. And there are some storage container requirements that are put in here now, so we can basically deal with shipping containers on residential properties.
Yeah, I had a question on that.
Yeah.
Let's see here. Because we kind of single out shipping containers, right? But we say all temporary structures. If we worded that a little different, couldn't we capture like semi-trailers, or somebody wanted to use their camper as a trailer?
Sure can.
And maybe like all manner of temporary structures, and get rid of the including shipping containers, you know, and then say will require. Everywhere that says, I just feel that if you single it out, then you're kind of targeting, not that that's a bad thing, but then somebody will come up with something else, you know.
Well, I think we should target shipping containers.
So kind of widen the scope, maybe.
Shipping containers has been the problem, I think that's serious.
Right, I'm just trying to think something like a basket shipping containers would fit into, you know, along with semi-trailers, or any other sort of temporary.
That would be maybe a portable, or portable structures? To be attached permanently, a fixed-
Why don't we say including shipping containers and other similar?
Yeah, that would work, yeah, something like that.
Are we referring to item number six? Is that where we're at?
Page six, number eight.
Number eight, sorry.
In, yeah, eight and ten.
In other places, yeah.
So we just all those that are shipping containers that get the language?
Including shipping containers and other similar type storage containers, storage buildings or containers. If that's all right with our-
With similar, leave it open for interpretation?
What's that?
The shipping containers and other similar, with similar, leave it open for interpretation?
It could, but short of identifying every kind out there. I mean, there's, they call them Conex boxes, they, you know.
There has to be a word for it. Because there are, they are, at one time, there are portable units. And if they were to become with an affidavit of a fixture, or a fixture, then that's the issue.
Right.
Well, I think if they built a foundation, and did all that, and that, then everything would be okay, right?
Right, then, right, then your foundation would be a fixed. So the unit themselves is more referred to as a portable storage container.
And I've seen semi-trailers.
Any portable storage containers, including?
Such type as?
So would you rather say portable storage, temporary portable storage containers? Would that cover it more?
Say that again?
Temporary.
Portable storage containers, temporary portable storage containers.
You mean, in addition to the shipping containers and?
No, I think Mark was suggesting that we don't say shipping containers.
Right, right.
So temporary, temporary storage containers being converted to a permanent structure.
But then does that put us in a quandary when it's a shipping container?
I think you might.
Gary, have any input?
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't eliminate shipping containers.
You would or would not?
I would say including, you know, all portable storage containers, including shipping containers, and some portable or otherwise, I mean.
That sounds good.
If we need to define different words to encompass it all.
Right.
You know, that'd be easier said than, yes, eliminating shipping containers, because that's primarily what we're seeing out there, that we're trying to get a handle on it, really.
Well, that would make it more solid, so.
Okay, so what's the language that we're going to work into this?
Well, if we, if we say other, you know, if we're in the other temporary structures, including shipping containers and portable containers, it's up to that effect.
Then you just got to add "and portable containers."
Yeah.
Okay. We can have that change drafted for you. The intent tonight was to hopefully you could schedule a public hearing on this. We could have those changes available for that meeting.
Does anybody else have any comments for the proposed draft?
That's all I seen.
One thing that I would like to add-
Sure.
Under nine, unfortunately, I didn't have a minute to talk to Steve by. On, on number nine, where it goes down and has number four, paragraph four in red, that really-
Hold on one second, I'm not there. What page?
On 301, nine is page sixty.
Sixty?
Sixty, six zero.
Six zero, okay.
So under nine, just says provisions of paragraph four above. We were bouncing that back and forth. So I think where we've got it right now, we read paragraph five instead of paragraph four.
Which would be the third line, structures shall be exempt from provisions of paragraph four, is that what you're referring to?
It'd be your page three, yeah. Nine on page three, where it says paragraph four, the third line, he suggested that be, five's appropriate.
Okay. See, I'm getting confused too, bud, I'm going with the page numbers.
I didn't have it at page sixty.
Well, it prints out, it's actually page three of the draft. No, there wasn't one on our desk this afternoon. Oh, I didn't get another one today, this is what I have.
One date is 6/11/22.
She's got the one on one, in her packet. Nope, that shouldn't have been there, six eleven, here, look, this is what mine is, 6/11/22.
Yeah, it's probably what I printed up at home.
Yeah, it's definitely what came up over to us in the email. That's not, no, it was- No, I appreciate that. Paragraph four should be paragraph five, correct?
Yep.
Yes.
So we're saying you got to have two or more acres for two accessory buildings?
Basically, yeah.
I thought we were going to change that to some other dimension, not two acres, reduce it.
Now, the two acres, Mark, that between, you know, five and nine is less than two acres or greater than two acres. And the difference there is if it's less than two acres, then all accessory structures combined cannot exceed the floor area of the main structure. And because we didn't have that section in there written that way, is why we lost that appeal recently. So it's still, you can have two accessory structures, less than two acres, two accessory structures greater than two. But if you're greater than two, then it can, your accessory structures can exceed the floor area of the main structure.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Any other questions for either Steve or Gary? Robert? Nope, anybody else at this end?
Nope.
Okay, so we need to set this for a public hearing, correct? So our next public hearing will be July, I don't have my calendar in front of me.
Twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh?
Yep.
July twenty-seventh?
Okay.
Anybody want to make a motion?
Item number two, I'll make a motion to schedule the Clay Township zoning amendments respective as of 6/11/22, no?
Yeah, the draft from 6/11/22?
Yes.
Make a motion to schedule the Clay Township zoning amendments presented in the draft of 6/11/22 for a public hearing to be scheduled on July twenty-seventh, 2022.
Wait a minute, we made some amendments to that, right?
With the changes.
Yeah, with the changes.
With the amendments discussed during our meeting.
With, dealing with the portable storage containers, yep.
Do you want me to include that?
You might.
Regarding the storage containers and the correction to?
The paragraph on, paragraph five from paragraph four on page three.
Changing paragraph four to paragraph five on page three.
I second it.
Okay, Sue, I'm going to ask you to restate that motion, please. Get a chance.
Set the public hearing for the zoning amendments presented in the draft of July 11, 2022, with changes discussed regarding storage containers and changing paragraph four to paragraph five on page three.
All right.
Sounds good to me.
Sounds good to you?
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion and support? Okay, any more discussion? Chris, when you're ready?
Deborah Addy?
Yes.
Mark Borchardt?
Yes.
Christopher Dagie?
Yes.
Christine Holcomb, yes. Tom Cozel?
Yes.
Bob Jacobs?
Yes.
Kathy Schweitzer?
Yes. Thank you, Steve, for getting us through that. And Gary also, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to item number eight B, which is the Field Road Special Approval Land Use. Steve?
You have in front of you a review I did, it's actually the fourth review, it's dated June 11th also. What it tells you is that they're in compliance with all the site plan requirements of our zoning ordinance, now that they have received the zoning board of appeals variance. So I'm suggesting you schedule the meeting, a public hearing on July 27th.
We do have an updated site plan?
It's the same site plan as last time.
Yes, yes.
Same one as last time?
Because they only changed, I mean, they received the variance. Before, it was too close to the property line.
Right.
Yeah, so nothing has changed from the last site plan. They have worked with us on every request we've made, and the site plan is satisfactory now.
Okay, because I was just going through your fourth review, and I was just questioning if the site plan we have now-
Fourth review is the same, yep.
Okay. Something about the length of the parking spaces should be indicated as twenty feet?
No. They agreed to that, yeah.
Right.
All right. Sorry, there was just a lot of information on this with the number of reviews.
And that is the 12122 site plan, right, revised site plan?
Yes.
All right, so do we have a motion for public hearing?
I'll make a motion. A motion to set the public hearing for 8999 Field Road. Date of review, June 11th, 2022. Site plan?
For July 27th?
For July 27th, sorry.
Any support?
No support.
Any discussion? Any none? Go ahead, Chris.
Deborah Addy?
Yes.
Mark Borchardt?
Yes.
Christopher Dagie?
Yes.
Christine Holcomb, yes. Tom Cozel?
Yes.
Robert Jacobs?
Yes.
Kathy Schweitzer?
Yes, thank you. Mr. and Mrs. Julia, you're here, right? Okay, I am very sorry- Okay, I am very sorry the way that this agenda went out. I apologize for it, but we never, this has been a long process, starting back in last year. For, for numerous reasons, but upon, everybody as a group effort, going back through the records when we got here tonight, there was never a public hearing, so we really truly have to set the public hearing. So, that'll be for July twenty-seventh, and hopefully we can get everything taken care of that day, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you for your patience, appreciate it. All right. Have a good evening.
Thank you too.
I'm gonna move on to item number nine, which is planning consultants report.
There are no new items that are pending for your next meeting, other than the zoning ordinance amendments and, uh, room to run. Uh, we will play, I will be placing on the agenda a copy of the draft Parks and Rec Plan that will be up to date with the exception of the goals and objectives, and that'll be up to the planning commission to provide some input on that.
Um, are you, did you have a chance for the solar ordinance? Have you been working on that with Gary?
We have not.
Okay. And how about Cabana Blue, any feedback from them?
I've received no feedback from Cabana Blue since the last meeting, prior to the last meeting, none at all.
Like two months out now?
Yeah, and I did provide him a copy of that parking analysis that I had given to you. Thinking I'd get some feedback, or guess I'll make it, if it changes, received nothing.
So, zero silence, just silence. Gary, have you, you had any feedback through your department at all?
With, um, with, um.
Cabana Blue?
Cabana Blue's. Yes, I did have a conversation with, you know, uh, about the site plan, that it wasn't technically, uh, approved.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that some of the items on the plan were approved, but, uh, because I think I told you at the last meeting that with the approval of, of certain items on there, uh, he did pull, uh, billing permit for a little hot dog, a hot thing, kinda been going on there, and he has brought in some other things, but I, I let him know that he still needed to finalize what he was going to do. And so, yes, I would expect something to come of that. I'm not so sure that, at this time, that he's gonna move forward with the, uh, the building, the separate building that he was talking about. Uh, I think he's just looking to get this part done, but he still needs to, to take care of it and get that official approval of his site plan. Uh, yeah, we talked about other things, uh, like whether or not he is a, uh, a marina or not a transient marina, or not a transient marina. Uh, about the, you know, drafting of the boats. We had open discussion about that, but obviously, it's his decision whether or not he wants to continue to be a transient, uh, marina. My thoughts on it is, right now, he's losing parking spaces because he's calling himself a transient marina. And maybe if he's just a restaurant that allows boat parking, uh, you know, even if it's for one overnight stay, which I think was approved.
It was.
Previously.
Mm-hmm.
And say, yeah, enjoy yourself, if you enjoyed yourself too much, you can stay the night, but then, you know, he has people that are working the wall out there to say, okay, it's time to leave. Uh, and then maybe he doesn't lose all those parking spaces like he would for transient marinas.
Sure.
So, we had this open discussion, uh, what he does from here, uh, I don't know. Uh, he did say that he was a few weeks away from being able to figure out exactly what he's doing and then come back to the board, but uh, Steve hasn't heard from him, and I haven't heard anything, uh, after that meeting that I had.
Well, thank you for the update, appreciate it.
Is there, is, having the lack of a final site plan or, you know, forward the changes that were approved, is that holding up the building end for him, or is that?
Well, somewhat, I, as far as, you know, that hut that he built, I, I already issued.
Nice stuff.
The permit, so he's.
Excuse, excuse me, everybody out in the hallway?
Oh, sorry, I'll need you, Bob.
Little bit, thank you. I'm sorry, go ahead, Gary, I apologize.
That's okay, but, um, you know, I did issue the permit, even though my fault, uh, that he didn't have a sign, uh, you know, approval of his site plan. It, it's to my, at this point, I'm saying it's, it's a done deal, that part was approved, we're just not official on the approval. I have done no inspections on that, and I encouraged him to, to get that handled before, you know, uh, I get caught up in the middle of it, I guess.
Sounds good.
What about the rafting and being able to put three boats deep, cause that's what a sign say up there, you can go out thirty feet, and that's what's on his.
Well, that.
That's what he was just talking about, yeah.
That's one of the things that this, uh, board did not approve.
But, but he's, well, but he's still showing that you can tie up there three deep.
My opinion on that with the rafting, it's not our call, okay? Uh, I don't see how it is our call, it's governed by the Coast Guard, and, and if it is our call, who's going to enforce it anyways? So, I say leave it alone, three boats, that's, that's it, you know, that's my opinion, okay?
I think the smartest move that you brought up, it's a restaurant with boating, and just leave it at that.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Yes.
Of course, uh, I think our planning consultant said that we did have a say in it as far as.
Yeah, I seem to remember that too.
And, um, I'll, I'll tell you this, if, if I go to that restaurant by boat, I have nobody rafting on me, and I have a say so of it, you know.
Well, that's what I say, who's gonna, who's going to?
Generally speaking, they're friends that do that.
Yeah.
So, you got three people to know one another.
Right.
Yeah, and that's different, and I did, uh, drive by it last night by, uh, by boat, I did see that, you know, there was no rafting going on.
Yeah.
But they had quite a few boats that were there, uh, for the restaurants, to be with the day yesterday, but, uh, I didn't see any rafting going on.
He's got more issues with the entrance, coming in and going out with the old seawall out there and stuff than he does.
Yeah, you do have to be careful, don't, don't.
Yeah, you gotta come into that thing right, man, or you're gonna ruin some props.
Don't get it wrong, like I did one day.
Well, this particular point is up to him to come back and get this cleared up, and we probably should, not probably, we should have been more stringent on getting the site plan taken care of that night, and we did not, so, as part of our.
I think we're chasing the shiny thing, the big thing you wanted to build, and then all the little peripheral stuff.
Yeah, we kinda got sidetracked, it was ten o'clock, right, not making excuses, should have done a better job, but here we are, so maybe we can get that cleaned up before we go forward with any other.
Well, exactly.
Bass.
And, and I was clear in that, um, you know, I, I met him on site and said, you know, getting that, uh, stamped approval of your site plan is point one, that should be done. And so, if you have any other ideas right now, get them on paper so we can.
Yeah.
Close this up and lose them out. If you're moving the building to maybe a little farther down the road, fine, you know, we can open things back up at that time. Uh, what you're doing right now, if this is as far as you're going, get the approval on the site plan.
Perfect, well, thank you for that information, appreciate it. Any more information you wanna give us?
That's it.
Really, okay.
I got one more question on the rafting, and, and you say, are you're saying that, uh, we do have the authority to limit, is that what you're saying? That's what I heard Kathy say?
What I'm saying is you have the authority to, when approving a special land use, to add conditions.
Okay, so, we really don't have an ordinance on that?
No.
Okay, that's all I wanted to hear.
Right, yes, you're correct.
Okay, well, then I'm gonna move on to item number ten, which is ZBA representative news report, which is Debbie.
That's me. Um, we had five, um, appeals last week. Two of them were on Anchor Bay Drive, um, they were both for boat houses. Um, these homes were very small, the lots, the shapes, um, so we approved those. Um, there was another one on North River Road, um, it passed due to the size and shape. Um, he had an old, um, dilapidated, um, structure there that was like a, um, storage shed, and it had been flooded, you know, when all the floods came. Um, and he wanted to get rid of it and put a nice new one there, so we kicked that around a little bit, and we did approve that. Um, then we had, um, Art Cook Marine, um, he was going to, um, add another building in his, um, property there. And again, um, he brought letters from the association that abuts Jacob Harson's field in the back, they had no problem. Um, due to the fact that it's mostly commercial around there anyway, um, and that you wouldn't even be able to see it, we did approve that as well. We had, um, one case on Ed Lane, um, that there's a trailer in an old garage from the eons ago. And they wanted to tear it completely down, but they wanted to have the sight line at the same, um, position where the trailer is now. And we did go ahead and prove that, and the neighbors all were happy too, so, so we approved all of those.
You were busy.
Yeah, it was pretty crazy.
Thank you for the report.
You're welcome. Let's see if there's anything else. Nope, that was it.
I don't know, number eleven's board representative's report, which is Mark.
Oh, okay, we, uh, not too much, uh, did have a meeting on, um, Monday night, and, uh, we approved, uh, some zoning. I think it was Point Trumbull, and then, uh, we set the board dates, which is online, you can take a look, that's all I really had, thank you.
Well, you did as, didn't do as much as ZBA, huh?
I know, I'm thinking, wow.
Gee whiz. Thanks, Mark, appreciate it. Number twelve is chairperson's report, um, I really don't have anything, cause I kinda just asked Steve as we went along, so, other than that, um, hope everybody's having a good summer at this point, how's that, okay? Number thirteen is planning commission members' comments.
We have a lot of, uh, events going on in, uh, end of June, in July, especially the Pickle tournaments going on, uh, some other events, so, staying to, uh, Antique Boat Parade, Kids Parade, you name it, so, um, come out and enjoy yourself here in the first part of July and end of July, thank you.
Anybody else?
Wish everyone a safe and happy Fourth of July.
Thank you, you too.
Sorry to believe it's coming up already. It is, definitely is. Uh, number fourteen, we'll be public comments, anybody from the public would like to make a comment? I don't see really any public hearings.
I just wanna thank the council for tonight's.
Thank you.
I, I have a question, um, you're talking about that seawall that's hidden, you know, in the, in the water there by Cabana Blue. Why don't they put markers there or something, is it, is there nothing that you can?
It's not us.
No, that would be Army Corps.
Yeah, Coast Guard and stuff like that.
And they said they did that, just put some bumpers out there or something, yeah.
They did put something, but it's nothing real navigatable, you know, you don't see it at night, or, you know, it's not lit up or anything like that, it's not buoy.
Yeah, there's a couple of pla- excuse me, there's a couple of places here in the North Channel, as you know, with the bars and everything, they used to mark that until it became a liability for the person that is marking it.
Right, right.
And so.
Right.
Uh, if you, if you do something like that, they still have the liability concern of whoever puts a bumper out there and somebody still hits it, well, you told me it was there and, you know, or it wasn't there and it is, so, it's liability concerns. Everybody's too happy, like me.
We know that.
Any other comments? Gary, none, I'm gonna move on to item number fifteen, adjournment.
Support.
Motion.
Motion, support. I'm sure there's no comments other than all in favor, I don't know, opposed. Thank you very much, everybody have a good Fourth of July.